Monday, October 6, 2025, Tiffin City Council Meeting to Order. The invocation and Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Snay.
All right. Please pray in your way as I will in mine. Lord, thank you for bringing us all together. You give us all these great attributes, our abilities, by design. You bring us together to serve the people of Tiffin, Ohio. We thank you for doing that. Tiffin is a wonderful place to be. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Doherty. Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Horniman.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Snay.
Here.
And Councilmember Thacker.
Here. Let the record show that six of seven councilmembers are present. Minutes from September 15, 2025, regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any deletions, substitutions, corrections? Okay. Seeing none, the minutes will stand as presented. We're now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilwoman Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Law and Community Planning, Councilwoman, or I'm sorry, anybody from Law and Community Planning?
No report, Madam President.
Materials and Equipment, Councilwoman Jones.
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilwoman Hayes.
No report, Madam President.
Recreation and Public Property, Councilwoman Snay.
No report, Madam President.
No report for Street Sidewalks and Sewers and Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilwoman Horniman.
No report, Madam President.
Okay. Does anybody see the need to schedule a committee of the whole? Great. We're now under reports of the officers. His Honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. As a reminder to all residents, that Aqua, the lead surface line replacement, is still continuing. Work on Ohio Avenue should be finishing up very soon, hopefully this week. And then work on North Sandusky Streets will be starting up right after that. Unrelated to that, the Aqua projects, 224 paving should finish up this week. So, weather permitting, hopefully that will happen. And this week is Fire Prevention Week. It's time to remind all of us to the importance of fire safety and preparedness in our homes, schools, and workplaces. I want to take a moment to recognize Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division for their dedication to protecting the community, not only through emergency response, but through ongoing education and prevention efforts. I encourage all residents to check your smoke alarms, plan escape routes, and talk with family members about fire safety. October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And with us today, we have Marissa, or I'm going to mess this up, but I'm going to try my best, Orzakowski, and Amy Kinney, who is the Executive Director of First Step of Fosteria. Didn't know if you wanted to stand up and say a few words about First Step Fosteria while you're here? Do you have, I can give you a couple of minutes, and then I have something for you.
Thank you all very much for having us and for doing this proclamation. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Tomorrow, the official fatalities report for Ohio will be released. I believe the number on that is 114. Two of those were in Seneca County this year, unfortunately. So, we are continuing our efforts of education, prevention, and caring for survivors when they are in need. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. I would like to offer this proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence affects millions of individuals each year regardless of age, economic status, race, religion, nationality, or educational background, and it is a pervasive issue that tears at the fabric of families and communities. And the city of Tiffin recognizes that domestic violence is not just a personal or private matter, but a public health and safety issue that impacts victims, children, workplaces, and neighborhoods. Whereas the month of October has been designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month to bring attention to the issue, to honor survivors, and to remember those laws to acts of domestic violence. And organizations such as First Step, local law enforcement, social service agencies, and community partners in Tiffin and Seneca County work tirelessly to provide shelter, advocacy, education, and support for those affected by domestic violence. Whereas ending domestic violence requires a collective voice and active participation of all citizens to promote safe, healthy relationships, and to support prevention and intervention efforts. And the city of Tiffin stands united with survivors and advocates in reaffirming our community's commitments to end domestic violence and to create a culture of respect, dignity, and accountability. Now therefore, I, Lee Wilkinson, Mayor of the city of Tiffin, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2025, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Tiffin, and encourage all citizens to increase awareness, speak out against abuse, support local efforts to assist victims, and work together toward a future free from domestic violence.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for the very important work that you guys do. Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like Bryce Riggs, actually, to stand up. You can come to the podium if you wish, because I know you're going to have a few words. A few, because Bryce is never lacking for words. So, this past weekend, you went somewhere, Geneva on the lake.
I did.
And you and your organization, Destination Seneca County, received some awards.
Yes, we won, we were fortunate to win three Ruby Awards, which is tourism, that's when first place for basically different divisions and across the entire state. We've been fortunate over the last four years, 14 different awards that we brought from the state level, which is really cool. And I think what makes the Ruby Awards really special is that, you know, it's us working directly with our partners. There's other state organizations out there that organizations get things that maybe we're fortunate that maybe a private investors or others jumped in to do. But this is really, we always say, we're the scrappy ones, that, you know, we don't have the largest budget, to say the least, but we have obviously the best team, and all our team members here. But we have the best team that really works with our partners to ensure that we paint our community in the best light possible and really think outside of the box.
You guys are obviously doing outstanding work. I just wanted to read this one little thing here. For Destination Seneca County earning three Ruby Awards is a strong testament to the creativity, dedication, and effectiveness of Bryce Riggs and his team at Destination Seneca County. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you so much.
But beyond that, Bryce actually earned an individual award. And that individual award is called the Emerging Leader. Is that correct?
It is, yeah.
The Emerging Leader Award. So, I have this commendation I would like to present to you. In recognition of your outstanding leadership, dedication, and achievement in receiving the Ohio Travel Industry Emerging Leader Award, the city of Tiffin extends its sincere congratulations and appreciation. Your tireless efforts to ensure that Seneca County's voice is heard at the state level have strengthened our community's presence and influence all across Ohio. Through your work advocating for tourism, business development, and regional collaboration, you have advanced opportunities that benefit both Tiffin and Seneca County. Your service on the Ohio Travel Association Board of Directors demonstrates a deep commitment to shaping statewide strategy and building partnerships to promote growth and innovation. Your vision, energy, and leadership continue to elevate our local profile, inspire others to contribute to our shared success. On behalf of the city of Tiffin, I commend you for your exemplary service and congratulate you on this well-deserved recognition.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say two, we're walking up here, obviously a couple of different things. One, obviously, we have a great team. As I noted before, they come to work every day, passionate to serve our community, which I think is crucial, right? I think having people who are truly invested in the work that we do says a lot. And over the years, I've been active at this for now 10 years, and people always say, you're going to burn out eventually, your team's going to burn out eventually. Yes, there's times that we get tired, exhausted, and we come back well-rested and rock and roll, which is crucial. Obviously, I want to thank the city, this is now, I think, our fourth year of support from the city, and it's instrumental in the work we do. And really, you know, the collaborative, the new approach we're taking, I do think it helps tourism have a seat at every table of every conversation we have, which is really important. A lot of different organizations, for example, they depend on their tourism arm to be, you know, they carry money over year after year. They depend on it really to be their organizational structure, which is great. I think we're fortunate in Seneca County that, you know, we don't depend on our tourism dollars to support our organization. I always say it's an opportunity for us to really take those dollars that people pay in lodging tax and reinvest those back into Seneca County. And so, when we make decisions, it's not about, all right, we need to close the year with this much in revenue left over, or make a, you know, make a profit. We don't, right? In reality, these aren't our dollars. We're just fortunate enough that we could distribute them with our partners into the community. And obviously, it starts with a great team, it starts with all of our partners. I've always said, you know, our job is to elevate Tiffin and Seneca County, and if we're all doing the right stuff, working in partnership with each other, it's really easy to do. So, I just want to thank council, the mayor, Nick, for all their support for our organization, because we obviously don't do it alone. It takes all of us rowing in the same direction and working in partnership. So, thank you.
Your team shows amazing dedication, showing up at all the events, whether or not it's something that you guys have sponsored, it doesn't really matter, you're showing up and being part of the community and showing some leadership in there. Appreciate that.
And this weekend, they dressed up as the characters from Wiccan. I'll be honest, I don't know their names, but I'm glad that Alphaba. Englenda, and I'm glad that they took off their outfits for work today, because I was worried Judy was going to show up to the office green this morning with her hat on. So, thank you for that.
All three. Yeah. Yeah.
I'll wait until he sits down. Councilwoman Snay.
Yes, Madam President. What I like seeing is that you have the maturity, the sincerity, you're, all three, to me, you're young, but it brings confidence seeing those attributes that, you know, serving Tiffin. And I mentioned in the invocation about you have special abilities. Everyone has special abilities, we're brought together. And now that's just, I hope all citizens of Tiffin are seeing this.
Councilwoman Reesner.
So, did you bring back Big Lots to Tiffin? Were you responsible for that?
I, no comment. Thank you for putting it on the spot.
But I do got to say, you do an excellent work in all aspects. We see you everywhere, you're working behind the scenes. I remember going back to Big Lots when the original store closed, I reached out to you, and you were, you were very sensitive to the people that were working there and getting them replaced to other places. So, we appreciate that. We appreciate your eagerness and your excellent project management. Thank you.
I would also like to just congratulate all three of you and your team in general. I feel like you guys are really pushing for a more connected community, and seeing the hard work, dedication, and heart that you put into all of it is really something special. Thank you.
Absolutely. Ditto what she said.
We go back to work tomorrow, right?
You still have to work tomorrow. Okay, and I have one more thing. Last but not least, I would like to introduce our new Director of Human Resources, Samantha Schurger. And Samantha, I understand you have a presentation for city council?
Yeah, 45 minutes long. Short and sweet.
It's not due until May 2026.
Thank you for having me. As Mayor Wilkinson said, my name is Samantha Schurger, the new Director of HR here at the city of Tiffin. I'm excited to step into this new role and support our employees and our community. My office is right around the corner, my door is always open, so if you need anything, any questions, let me know. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you very much. Didn't know if anybody had any questions or comments for Samantha?
Welcome.
And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Okay. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to go over the suspensions that we have this evening in our ordinances. Ordinance 2025-82, there's several things going on in this ordinance, and we are asking for suspension. There are several things, several things that are very important that we get started on right away. We have a few income tax refunds that we need to get taken care of before the end of the year, and we were running short on budget, so we need to put some more money in the budget. We also have to put more money on the postage meter, and municipal court was running out of funds, so that's something we need to do right away. We were getting the low funds message from the meter last week, so we need to do that as soon as possible. The police department wants to get started on their new interview room, they've had several donations for that, so they're excited to get started with that. And also, we had a budget shortage for the police clerks department. They had a change in one of the employees' insurance choices. And anytime you have something like that where you had set the budget and then they decided to change the amount, whether it be to a family covered or whether it's employee spouse, anything that's more than what they originally asked for, with it being such a small department, you're not able to absorb that. So, we need to pay that invoice for October, so that's why we're asking for suspension, because it's due before the end of the month. And then the last one, 2025-83, this is a budget-neutral thing, where the municipal court general projects budget, they want to purchase a transport vehicle, and we are supplying a third of that cost. And where they had the money was under other professional services, but that wasn't really the proper place to spend it from, so we're just going to take it out of that and then put it in the property and equipment, which is the proper place to spend it from. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions for Kathy? Yes, Councilwoman Horniman.
With the police, that's that soft interview room that they're putting together, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's not a, it's being designed not to be an intimidating type of, you know, atmosphere and such and everything, which I think is, you know, when you're dealing with children and people with disabilities and all kinds of things, you know, that, I think that goes a long way with what they're doing there, as part of kind of their missions.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Director of Law, Zachary Fowler.
Yeah, thank you. So, just a few things. I think I talked last meeting about with Kathy's retirement, with the change in Finance Director, kind of that process. And I know the mayor's point letters and your packet, but just to kind of reiterate, you'll have a temporary period where you have an acting Director of Finance, and then you'll have the chance to interview the appointee that the mayor has and then make a vote on that person. Just bear in mind, too, that on the resolutions, when we do this, you'll just also see we'll have the authorized payment for, pay for the acting Director of Finance, because that's not in the pay ordinance. And then also compensation for benefits. So, you just see that language in the resolution for the acting Director of Finance when we go to do that. And then the only other thing I want to touch on is reminder that early voting starts tomorrow, and we do have elections, we do have council president, we just have the one candidate, which is Bridgette. which is Bridgette, and then we do have four candidates for council at large. So just a reminder, get out there and, and go shake hands and say hi to people, but also the yard signs, start seeing those out more. This always happens, people's yard signs end up in the tree lawn area, the boulevard, there should be on the other side of the sidewalk. So if you see your sign get moved over, because people cut grass or whatever, they move it, and they don't move it back, just get your sign on the homeowner's side of the sidewalk. And that is all I have to report.
Great, great. Any questions, comments, concerns? Great. Okay, we are now under written communications.
Thank you. We have mayor's request for legislation number 25-45, sale of retention pond.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-45 has been assigned to the Recreation and Public Property Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-49, dedication of Progress Parkway.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-49 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 25-84.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-50, street light in alley.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-50 has been assigned to the Streets, Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-51, appointment of the finance director for the City of Tiffin.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-51 has been assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-52, grant application for parks.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-52 has been assigned to the Recreation and Public Property Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-53, Tiffin Dora Review.
Mayor's request for legislation number 25-53 has been assigned to the Streets, Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Finance director's request for legislation number F25-41, to amend the 2025 budget ordinance 24-94, to appropriate funds into the police capital budget.
Finance director's request for legislation number F25-41 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 25-82.
Finance director's request for legislation number F25-42, to amend the 2025 budget ordinance 24-94, to appropriate funds into the finance and municipal court budgets.
Finance director's request for legislation number F25-42 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 25-82.
Finance director's request for legislation number 25-43, to amend the 2025 budget ordinance 24-94, to reallocate funds in the municipal court general projects budget.
Finance director's request for legislation number F25-43 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 25-83.
Finance director's request for legislation number F25-44, to amend the 2025 budget ordinance 24-94, to appropriate funds into the police clerk's budget.
Finance director's request for legislation number F25-44 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 25-82.
And we have the third quarter 2025 credit card compliance report from our compliance officer, Linda Neely.
The credit card compliance report will remain on file with the clerk's office. Counselor Reisner.
Motion to accept the credit card report for third quarter 2025.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Counselor Jones?
I second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
And then we also have, that was added tonight, excuse me, a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new D5L permit for Sprigge LLC at 129 South Washington Street.
This will be assigned to the Streets, Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
And that concludes the written communications.
Okay. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step up to the podium, sign in, and address your councils to myself. Okay, seeing none. We are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? We are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 2025-40, introduced by Dennis Snay, a resolution renaming Applejack Park to Louisa K. Fast Park, renaming the existing Louisa K. Fast Park on State Route 101 to Tiffin East Park and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of resolution 25-40.
Resolution number 2025-46, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, a resolution expressing appreciation to Kathleen E. Kaufman for her service to the City of Tiffin as the Director of Finance.
I'd like to make a motion to have resolution 2025-46 to be read in its entirety. Is there a second? Counselor Snay.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the, I'm sorry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Apologies, thank you.
Would you like me to read it? Or are you reading?
Either one.
You made, you were prepared.
Whereas Kathleen E. Kaufman's long tenure and dedicated service to the City of Tiffin began in 1990 as a college intern, in June 1991, she was hired into the tax department and then promoted to payroll manager in September 1999. Kathy was then appointed as Director of Finance by then-mayor Aaron D. Montz at the regular council meeting of July 16, 2018, and confirmed by city council on August 6, 2018. And whereas in her time as Finance Director, Kathleen E. Kaufman has led the department to receive the Auditor of State Award four times for clean audit reports. She also oversaw a software conversion, the addition of online bill pay, a curbside collection receptacle, e-filing for income tax returns, and a building renovation of the city hall annex. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Tiffin, Ohio as follows. Section 1, the Tiffin City Council publicly expresses its sincere appreciation to Kathleen E. Kaufman for her service to the City of Tiffin as the Director of Finance, and thanks her and her family for unselfishly giving of her time and talents for the betterment of the city. Section 2, the clerk of council is hereby directed to provide a certified copy of this resolution to Kathleen E. Kaufman. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law.
Thank you all so very much. It has been such an experience. It's been an honor to serve with you and serve this wonderful community that I've lived in my whole life. And I never dreamed that I would be the Director of Finance, but it has really changed me as a person, and I've learned so much, and it's just been so wonderful working with everyone and, and serving.
Well, you have been great for the City of Tiffin. You really have. We thank you. No, seriously, don't you want to pass the resolution?
I do.
On the road.
You're retired.
I didn't want to give this to you until they actually passed the resolution, because if it fails, I'm taking the oath.
I'll be the one that would do it.
I will move to pass resolution 2025-46. Is there a second? Counselor Reisner.
I second the motion gladly.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, I have a little bit. I just wanted to express my sincerest thanks to Kathy, who has led us, in all of the ways that you don't see, I feel like Kathy gives solid, honest advice, and I would trust anything she told me, even if it were an obnoxious lie. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Resolution 2025-46 passes with a vote of six to zero. Should we all watch Kathy?
Christmas morning.
If it's cake, I'll share.
It's a, it's a hat.
Oh my gosh. This is beautiful. Thank you so much.
Ordinance number 2025-76, introduced by Scott Horniman, an ordinance to revise the codified ordinances by adopting replacement pages thereto and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2025-76.
Ordinance number 2025-77, an ordinance amending section 935.04 of the codified ordinances to allow sale, possession, or consumption of alcohol at Oakley Park and Rotary Club of Tiffin Centennial Park and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2025-77.
Ordinance number 2025-78, introduced by Kyle Dougherty, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property located at 17 North Washington Street in the City of Tiffin, Ohio.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2025-78.
Ordinance number 2025-82, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget ordinance 24-94, to appropriate funds into the police capital budget, municipal court budget, and police clerk's budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2025-82. Counselor Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 2025-82, suspending city council's reading rule.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Counselor Horniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Counselor Reisner.
Thank you. As the finance director stated, this is for donations in the police budget for the interview room, the postage meter for the courts, and also some finance department-related budget accounts for dealing with refunds.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes. The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes. I'm sorry, ordinance 2025-82 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 2025-83, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget ordinance number 2024-94 to transfer funds within the municipal court general projects budget and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2025-83. Counselor Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 2025-83.
Okay, is there a second? Counselor Jones.
I second that motion, Madam President.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Counselor Reisner.
Thank you. As noted by the finance director, this is for the municipal courts pivot for one-third funding for a vehicle and some budget-neutral accounts where that need to be changed.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension first.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, the emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the passage.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes. Ordinance 2025-83 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 2025-84, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker, an ordinance accepting the dedication of a street named Progress Parkway, located in the Third Ward of the City of Tiffin, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2025-84. I move for suspension of, immediate passage of ordinance 2025-84 and suspension of city council's three reading rule. Is there a second? Counselor Snay.
Yes, a second, that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Horniman.
It's my understanding this is just part of the dedication of the Progress Parkway project. It's part of something that is required for them to finish up this from our end. It's not, we're not making any actual sale or anything like that, it's just the dedication of doing it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, the suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the emergency.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reisner.
Yes.
Snay.
Yes.
And Thacker.
Yes, ordinance 2025-84 passes with a vote of six to zero.
And that concludes the legislation, Madam President.
Okay, we are now under other business. The first thing is that I would like to announce a public hearing notice. This is regarding ordinance 2025-76, an ordinance to revise the codified ordinances by adopting replacement pages thereto and declaring an emergency. This public hearing will take place on Monday, October 20, 2025, during the regular meeting of Tiffin City Council at 7:00 PM in council chambers at 51 East Market Street, Tiffin, Ohio. Okay, any other business for this evening?
Yes, I'd like to schedule a Personnel and Labor Relations Committee meeting. I don't have a date yet, but that's what we're here for.
I can fill you some time if you give me two seconds. I will bring up again to the Streets, Sidewalks and Sewers Committee the notice we've received from Ohio Division of Liquor Control, bless you, Kevin, regarding the new D5L permit for Sprigge LLC. Is anyone requesting a hearing? No. Okay, then we will ask the clerk to respond that we are requesting no hearing for that. Did that buy you some time?
Yes, it's my understanding we cannot do Wednesday, October 8th. Is that correct?
We could. We have enough time for a public, a public notice on that.
Okay.
I have a meeting at 6:00.
Okay.
So we'd have to push it along.
Okay.
I also have obligations at 6:00.
At 6:00, okay. Mayor, is that, I'm great. If that's okay with the rest of council, I think that would, it sounds like it would work best to get everybody in the room, or as many people in the room as possible.
Wait, at what time?
Wednesday, October 8th.
Good.
At 5:15 PM.
Yeah. It might be a touch late, but I'll get over here.
Okay. Personal, it sounds like Personal and Labor Relations Committee meeting will meet Wednesday, October 8th, at 5:15 PM in council chambers. We will be discussing mayor's request for legislation 25-51, an appointment of the finance director for the City of Tiffin.
Okay.
And any other business that comes before our committee.
Okay. So it looks like we have Streets, Sidewalks, Sewers, and Recreation and Public Property. Go ahead, Dennis, if you have a suggestion.
I was going to just say, I'd like to schedule a meeting for the same date after, after the Personnel and Labor Relations meeting. I think that goes before the committee.
Okay. That just leaves me, and I have the tricky one, because I can't meet any later that date, so if we are looking at our calendars, the 15th was an issue for- the fifteenth was an issue for the mayor. Is that correct? Is there anybody in the Tiffin Dora Review? I'm guessing you would like to be at that one, if possible.
Yes. I think it would be good for me to be at those Heritage Ohio Awards.
And Zach, you are out. I'm sorry, Law Director, you're out Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Correct.
Okay. What about, I know it's unpopular, but what about, like, a lunch? I know that doesn't really work, that doesn't work for two out of five for me. What about the seventeenth? Right after work? I know that's not fun, but.
I'm fine. I'm fine.
I could even meet a little earlier if that makes it easier.
I could, too, yeah.
Friday the seventeenth, what time?
What's the earliest? You can be there in the afternoon.
Wish I could really answer that, because I'm not, oh, sure, on any, any given day.
Four for you. Four for you.
Four is five.
I could do three thirty, too.
What about four fifteen, four thirty? How does that work for?
We can go four on the seventeenth.
Four on the seventeenth?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll figure it out.
All right. Thank you, Dennis.
The Street Sidewalk Sewer.
Aaron, I'm sorry. Street Sidewalk Sewers meeting for October seventeenth at four o'clock. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss mayor's request for legislation number twenty-five dash fifty, number twenty-five dash fifty-three, and any other business that comes before that committee. Okay. Anything else? Law Director?
Yeah, just for purposes, the Dora review. Again, this is the five-year that, that you have to review it. Sort of the question is, there's not really great guidance as to what it is you're all reviewing, other than taking in Dora over the last five years. So, if there's, I guess, any information that you'd like to see as part of that review, feel free to reach out to City Administrator for that. But there's not really a standard under the statute as far as what it is you're to review. And when I asked the Division of Liquor what you all should review, they were not very helpful either. So, but it's whatever information you think is pertinent to what, essentially, you're gonna see the question, should the Dora continue for another five years?
Okay. Okay, anything else for the good of this body? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
Sorry, I didn't mean to push the.
The single Dora song.